Yeah, yeah.
Good.
I'll give you your order for a pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ball?
Yeah.
Mrs. Brew?
Here.
Mr. Babalani?
Here.
Dr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yep.
Can we have the approval of the minutes for the November twenty-third, two thousand fifteen meeting? Any additions or corrections?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the November twenty-third meeting notes for two thousand fifteen.
Support.
I'd like to make one correction. Back under my comments, I did not mention school board. I was concerned about any conflict of interest with council member Brew. It was more that her husband was...I didn't say why I was concerned, I just didn't want any conflict of interest. But I'm not concerned about the school board.
Okay.
Roll call.
Oh, do we have a Brew? Okay, Mrs. Brew?
Yes.
Mr. Babalani?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yep.
And then for approval of a manifest, two thousand fifteen dash twenty-two. Any comments, Mrs. Brew?
No.
Mr. Ball?
Nope.
Mr. Meneghini?
No questions, just one comment. We paid in fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and some odd cents to the municipal employees retirement system, MERS, and we're still losing ground. That's all.
Mr. Babalani?
I have a couple, Doc. On the first page, Ray, under the administration, the tax assessor for his membership fees. Is that just for the city, or is that some kind of schooling that's shared with...I know he's township, Wasida supervisor or tax assessor?
I believe that's just for the city.
That's just for the city?
Yeah.
Okay. The GO-TEC charges of eight seventy-two, is that a normal charge per month?
That was a little higher because there was some additional work that they had to do this month. Normally six hundred dollars.
Okay. The tower rental for the...
But I will, I'll double check that to make sure.
Okay. Down under the police department, the fire tower rental, is that for, like up by the TV with Mr. Servia? Or is that up by the ski hill?
No, that's up by the ski hill, that's all the radios.
Okay, okay. I knew it was radios, I didn't know which, where it was.
We split that with North Alert and the police. So it's police, fire, and ambulance.
Okay. On page two, the backhoe roller for the asphalt, is that just for a day usage? Or what is that, Joe, one hundred and seventy-five bucks?
We had, we use it for two and a half days.
Two and a half days?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think that would be wise down the road when we're a little bit better off if we look at purchasing one of them? Or we don't use it very often?
I think that we would use it a lot more, Mark, if we had one, yes. I'm always looking for one. But you're right, that was in the plan someday that we would like to have one.
Because I know I've had a couple people bring up to me that some of the major patches that are put down, super patch or whatever you call it, that maybe we should pack them a little bit more. Under the refuge truck, the starter, being that truck is new, that two hundred and forty dollars, is that starter under warranty or not? Number one thirty on the truck?
One thirty, that's the old one. The starter went on the old one, Mark.
Okay. The DDA, under the eleven-foot statue, I do think it's a nice statue, but ninety-seven hundred dollars. You know, I know it's DDA funded and it's going to look nice, but that's a lot of money. So, I guess that's all I have.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to have a motion to approve the manifest.
I'll make a motion to approve manifest twenty fifteen dash twenty-two in an amount of four hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and seventeen cents.
Support.
Roll call.
Babalani, was that your support?
Yes, yep.
Mr. Babalani?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Mr. Ball? Mrs. Brew?
Yes.
Anyone from the audience like to address the council on the manifest or any of the agenda items? If not, then you have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to make further comment on any topic. The first item on the agenda then is the resolution two thousand fifteen dash twenty-seven, recognition of councilperson and former mayor Jeremy Oja, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, we have a resolution recognizing Jeremy Oja for his work on city council. If you would like, I can read it.
Sure.
Okay. Whereas Jeremy Oja has served the residents of City of Norway as an elected official, holding the office a council member, April two thousand eight to November two thousand fifteen, and mayor from two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen. And whereas Mr. Oja's zeal for elected service and knowledge of the political process was instrumental as the city competed for state and federal grant dollars. And whereas the city council during Mr. Oja's tenure advanced numerous capital initiatives, including municipal facilities expansion, comprehensive street improvements, and major utility upgrades and improvements, including substantial improvements to the Sturgeon Falls hydroelectric facility and electric distribution system. And whereas Mr. Oja gave freely and generously of his abilities and knowledge by serving on various City of Norway boards and committees, including but not limited to the Downtown Development Authority, our Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, North Alert Ambulance Authority, Dickens County Construction Code, and the Dickens County Access Management Committee. And now therefore be resolved, City Council of City of Norway wishes to extend its sincere thanks and appreciation to his dedication to the city, community, and the operations of the City of Norway. Let it be further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the City Council for the City of Norway recognizing his accomplishments. Adopted the seventh day of December, two thousand fifteen.
Do you need a motion?
Yes. For resolution two thousand fifteen dash twenty-seven.
I'll make a motion that resolution, resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty-seven be approved.
Support.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yep.
Mrs. Brew?
Yes.
Mr. Babalani?
Yes.
I want to thank Jeremy for amount of time that he spent personally, I'd just like to thank him. I think especially as mayor, he was always available and we appreciate his staff, appreciate his efforts. So, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you. Do you want to sit and speak?
I'd just like to thank the council for the recognition, so like to thank residents who was honored and privileged to serve them for seven and a half years.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is North Alert Ambulance Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, with the change of board, we do have a couple of appointments. First is for the North Alert Ambulance Authority. The City of Norway needs to appoint one member and one alternate member to this five-member board. The North Alert Ambulance meets every third Thursday at seven PM in the Fire Hall. Notice I did not slate anybody that's up to the council for who to be a board member and who to be alternate. It can be, it's council member or member of staff, or actually it can be anybody, but typically it was the councilperson or member of the staff that represented.
Anybody on the council interested?
I would like to be interested, but I have other previous commitments on Thursdays and it just wouldn't work out for me.
I'm interested.
Good. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Ms. Brew, then for anyone who want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, Mrs. Brew get nominated for the North Alert Ambulance Authority.
Support.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yep.
Mrs. Brew?
Yes.
Mr. Babalani?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the Dickinson County Construction Code Commission.
We need an alternate.
Oh, an alternate, okay. I can serve as an alternate.
Can we put Dr. Hayes in that?
Motion?
Sure, you guys all agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is for the Dickinson County Construction Code. Again, the same, we needed a member and an alternate. The bylaws in this particular organization are very specific. They needed to be a council member or the city manager. I'm not sure why they were so specific, but that's what...we have two boards that are like that, the Solid Waste and this particular board. But anyway, if anybody's interested, they meet on the third Tuesday at six-thirty up in Iron Mountain, or Kingsbury.
Anybody interested on the council?
I served on, or really, Doc, you know. I'd like to see somebody else take it for a while, or change.
Do we really have to have somebody on this?
We can have Ray, if Ray's interested.
I have pretty much defaulted into taking board decisions, you know. But I can do this if you guys want me to serve on it.
Otherwise, there is not much work to it at all.
It's a pretty quick meeting.
Well, I can be an alternate then, how's that sound?
Go on to Iron Mountain and back, because the meeting, if it lasts twenty minutes, it's long.
If you, I would, I would be willing to represent.
We have a motion to that effect, please, somebody?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Anderson is the member to the Dickinson County Construction Code Commission, and Mr. Meneghini is the alternate.
Your second?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ball?
Yep.
Mrs. Brew?
Yes.
Mr. Babalani?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the approval for a license agreement between the UP State Credit Union and the city. Mr. Anderson?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular item is something similar that we've done in a couple other cases. Over by the credit union, the entrance to the credit union is actually, it looks like a shared drive, but it's actually a road entrance. That's road right-of-way. The right-of-way itself is quite large. The credit union has requested consideration to allow putting one of those small entrance signs, entrance/exit signs, near the entrance, because it's offset from the building slightly. And when we looked at their application and then we looked at the right-of-way, it doesn't make sense to put the little sign like that that far away, because the way that the actual road is built, there's probably twenty-five, thirty feet before, from the edge of the road over to the, where they would be able to put their sign legally. So, they're requesting basically this license agreement, it's a simple license agreement. Basically says at this time we'll allow you to put it there, and in the future if we need to use the right-of-way or we need to have you move it, we can tell you basically at any time to move it. So, we've done this on a couple different occasions. It's pretty straightforward.
Is there any cost involved in this, Ray?
None, no cost to us whatsoever. I don't know, Grant, would there be any cost to this on the legal side?
No, no, I didn't take a look at the license agreement.
It's a pretty standard form license agreement, very simple.
Well, I was just thinking if there is some dollars involved, they should have to pay for it.
I don't think they would have a problem with that, you know, at all, because they had originally came back, initially came back and were willing to pay the five hundred dollars to vacate. I recommended that they consider the license agreement, because when you vacate, that's final, and you don't quite know what's going to happen over an area. Rather than vacate the right-of-way and lose it forever, this is a better midterm solution.
I agree, I would want to vacate.
So they were willing to pay that, so I don't think that they would have a problem if they have a slight fee.
Any other questions for me?
Well, I'm all for it, except I don't want to, this is to set a precedent, because if something like this happens again, it'll be on a...
It's a case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case basis, that's all.
Yeah, we haven't set precedent yet, we've done, I think, three of them, and every one of them's been a case-by-case basis.
Any like to make a motion for that agreement?
I'll make the motion that the council approve a license agreement with UP State Credit Union for the purpose of placing a small entrance sign near their drive entrance off US two but located on the city right-of-way.
Support.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Brew?
Yes.
Mr. Babalani?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yep.
And that's our meeting for tonight. Unless someone from the audience would like to make a comment on any subject, please limit your time to five minutes and state your name and address for the record. If not, this would be an opportunity for the council to make comments, Lee?
Couple comments here. It was awful nice to see the Thirsty Whale have an article in the paper from that New York magazine about one of the best burger places in the UP, and I'm sure Paulo was very proud of that. And also, our Santa Claus parade was very impressive. I mean, it was nice to see the street lined up for basically five blocks with people standing on both sides. Weather-wise, it was a lot better than it had been in the past, but it was good to see, real good to see. That's all I have.
Mer?
Yeah, I have a couple, Doc. Joe, on that, on the manifest, I missed something. On page four, the WPPI energy payments we're making, those are for the streetlights, I'm taking it?
You mean for the loan?
It says WPPI LED lighting monthly loan, yes.
Yes, that would be correct. That's the zero percent loan from WPPI to put up the energy efficiency lighting.
How many more payments are we...that was on there like three years ago, is that...
Mark, I'd have to get back.
That was like a ten-year, I think it's like a ten-year agreement.
Mary, Mary can look it up tomorrow, we can get that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not really that big of a deal, I just...
Exactly how much it is.
One of the things that, when we move forward with that project, the, you know, the energy savings out of the general fund, we're going to, you know, offset those costs. So I think that that's something that, it wouldn't be a bad time to pick that up, actually, and just take a quick look at it. But I think, I think that's something we can look at.
Okay. Being the weather is still nice, Joe, I noticed over by Trish's place there on Fifth and Mine, there's still an orange cone that smashed down over the top of the storm sewer, and the storm sewer is sunk way down. I don't know if that's something, being we're not plowing snow yet, it looks like it's going to be clear for the next week or so, if it's possible to deal with a couple of those.
I'll get with Dave in the morning, have a discussion on it.
I had requested that the couple of the contracts, the manager and the utility director be involved in our packets. I'm hoping the council looks at some of those. I do think we need to look at everything to try to save a little money, being we're twenty-four million plus in debt. And right now, we got the two gentlemen, they're doing a decent job, but we're paying them a quarter of a million dollars with benefits, vehicles, and wages. And I think we should look at the packets just to make sure. And I didn't see anything in the packets for the council to show what they've been working on. I only been at one meeting and I'd like to see that on a regular basis, so I know, and I think, I don't know, I can't speak for Candy, but she wasn't here either. So, I'd like to see that stuff, thank you.
But do you need to see?
I'd like to see what the manager and the utility director are working on, on a monthly basis.
George, any comments?
No.
I'd also agree with Lee, the Christmas parade was really nice, it was nice to see the town full of people and kids happy here in City Hall seeing Santa. Whoever had worked on that parade did a very nice job.
I've got a couple of concerns. One is that, like Mr. Babalani indicated, that we have a big debt based on the retirement package. I think that's something that we need to open up, is even though these are contracts that are long ago, the package that we developed for our employees was richer than we can afford. It was based on the recommendations of an inept city manager at the time. So I'd like to see us open up those old contracts and try to reduce our obligation to the retirement. It may not get anywhere, but I think we need to try, we should try that first before we try any kind of a legislative solution. We have to find some solution, it's something that the city can't sustain forever, and it's my understanding MERS and their mismanagement is closing the window quicker than we had in the past, and that means that our debt's going to climb even quicker, or our payout is going to have to be quicker. So I think we need to open up the old contracts and reduce the, from the very top benefit package for retirement to a lesser package that the city employees had. I was on the council at the time, and at the time, we wanted to do what's best for our employees, we always tried to give them what was best. But this is something we can't afford. And again, if we had a better manager at the time, I don't think that would have even been on the table. We were told at the time it wouldn't cost us anything, so the council went along with it. So I'd like to see those contracts opened up again. At the next meeting, my second concern would be, I'd like to have further discussion on the metering project. I'd like, maybe the manager could lay out again what the costs would be, what the benefits would be, what the payback is, all the financial aspects of that, and what are the advantages of having this, and maybe we should continue holding it. But I was under the impression last meeting that we were going to discuss this further, so I'd like to see that put back on the agenda and at least discussed at the next meeting, if we could get some kind of a presentation as to all the aspects of it.
I agree with Doc on the metering project, I don't think we should wait too long, because if we decide that we are not going to go with the project, maybe we can get some money back on some of the things that were sent, the expensive receivers that we wouldn't need. So, I'm with Doc on that.
Anyone over there like to make any comments? Joe, any update on the hydro?
Mechanically, no, it's, unit number three is steadily getting worked on. The other units, I believe we told you at the last meeting, the report wasn't due until the end of December, so we're not going to be repairing the other runners or working on them until we get that report to make sure we're doing the right work on it. As far as water goes, we've had a very good, last month was a very good month for us with water. Even with two units out, we didn't spill a lot of water, but we made a lot of power with unit number one and unit number four. Our electric bill for last month was only forty-one thousand dollars from WPPI, which is just phenomenal.
For this time of the year.
Yeah, we actually sold power back, about three hundred and fifty megawatt-hours of power we sold back to WPPI and got credited on the bill. So, things are going very well down there, even with, you know, some of the issues that we're having, they're still going good. So, pleased with that. The guys are still working down there, my linemen are down there doing some wiring, trying to get the new three-phase power to the hot water heater that we put at the new tanner gate. We put in a commercial three-phase hot water heater to heat the seals so it wouldn't freeze. So that's where everybody's been at for the last few weeks, working on that. Other than that, unless there's a specific question regarding something down there.
Mary or Trish, any comments?
I've got one, I see Bruce is in the audience, we're standing on the bids package that supposed to have been out six months ago.
I'll make a good comment, George, but I don't know, Ray, have you talked to everybody about this week?
I put it in the packet to get the meeting scheduled.
I think we're looking at getting together next Monday specifically for discussions on the waste artifing plant and water sewer project. We spent a couple weeks, I think, or a long even less time on that. But as far as the waste artifing plant, which is the furthest project along, it's the same as it's been, the legal package is what's in progress, that's the last thing to be done. Ray and I met with Steve Pintey a week ago, Thursday, no, last Thursday, I think it was, right, last Thursday. And he had two easements left to get, and I think he said he was planning to meet with those people this week. Those are, you know, easements, some of you recall for sure, I know Candy's knew this, and Mary, you haven't been with it for a while, but many of us, I also said several of easements that were gotten back in the late seventies and eighties when that project happened, and we put sewers in the township, couldn't be found, hadn't been recorded, and we had to go get new ones. The archives were turned upside down, a lot of people spent a lot of time looking, and eventually we decided to go get them signed again. And that's been taking some time. And that legal package, like the last check was like, it was all, and they send, and I'm not going to get too long in here because I want to get into depth with this next week, but they have to send that legal package to their general counsel, which is their group of attorneys that are federal related. And until that, they review all the legal package stuff, whoever I take a opinion and some other things, they will not authorize us to do a bid. And we have to get their approval to do that. And I got some potentially bad news from Rural Development when I stopped in there last Wednesday. Apparently, a year or so ago, the federal government closed the Chicago office of that group of folks and laid out a bunch of people in a cost-cutting event. And all that stuff's going to Atlanta, and they're seeing turnaround times approaching three months. In normal days, it was maybe thirty days. So, what that means, and I think Steve hopes to have that whole legal package submitted to Rural Development before the end of the year, by the holidays, the next couple of weeks. And if everything's in order and that gets sent out, and in fact, there's a three-month turnaround, we're looking at the end of March before we would be authorized to bid that project. And it's, unfortunately, we're in the early process, and that's what it takes. But, you know, if we can do that, and we can take bids in somewhere in the first part of May, and again, I might talk more about this next week, the process, but if we don't have much issues, we're being over budget, or we don't like the contractor, who's low, those kind of things. We can be under construction, could be July, starting construction, and believe it or not... Well, we can be under construction, could be July, starting construction, and believe it or not, and I'm going to give you guys next, guys, ladies, I gotta remember that. Next week, a bar chart scheduled on the Water Sewer Project, although that could change some based on what I found out last Wednesday, but that project is catching up, and, you know, that could be under construction potentially at the same time, or shortly thereafter, but these turnarounds are really critical of the schedule, and we have no control. So, long answer maybe to your question.
I'm not going to elaborate, Bruce, with you, you know my feelings.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I do, but.
Dirty shame, six months ago, we thought, the council was promised, you know, geez, we most likely could have this out, the bids, and possibly contractors would have their choices whether they want to work on this, this winter or not.
Promise is not the right word.
Six months later.
Promise is not the right word, there's always a promise, the legal package is outside my control, and the Rural Development stuff is outside my control, and nothing to do with it. So, if I indicated that a more optimistic schedule was because I probably thought that some way of a legal package was going to be done quicker, and I had no idea that the general counsel turnaround was going to be that long.
Well, I don't doubt your word that they closed the office, Bruce, but the way our federal government operates, I find it very hard to believe they're trying to save money anyplace. I really do.
You know, I'm only in control of so many things here, I mean, going on controls, the other thing that comes up, and we don't have this with that project, what we have with the Water Sewer Project, is I, we control how long we do, will take to review plans and issue their construction terms. But next week, if we were going to meet, we can spend a lot of time talking about schedules, policies, and all that, and you'll have a lot of opportunity to ask questions for a lot.
That street project, Bruce, how long is that going to take? I mean, being we're starting midsummer, I know we're going to have an extensive session, but I just wanted to get that on.
Yes, you know, Mark, we don't know how many crews of contractors you must put on and all that sort of stuff, but, you know, if we don't get started event construction until July, August, there's just a very good chance it's going to spill into the ball again. And a lot of that depends on the weather we have, you know, this stuff, contractors would be working done whole. A lot of times, by the first November, maybe they're going to have to shut down, but, you know, why should we get so early? So there's a lot of hippies with that, but because of this turnaround too, I just found that out from last week, that could impact that schedule, so there's, there's a, there's just a pretty good chance that that project's going to be ongoing in 2017.
If you, if you look at the scope of the project, if you started right at the beginning of construction season, you'd probably go right to the end of construction season, I mean, you'd probably look at the whole.
The right contractor with the right crews, if you start construction in May, there's a chance it'd be done right.
I mean, it's outside of our project, but it has to distinct areas.
Yeah, I was just curious because, you know, the roads aren't getting any better.
No, they're not, but, you know, we're getting close. Are we, are we meeting together then, next Monday?
Yeah.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, Monday night.
Well, we'll be all sorts of open that, so, thanks.
What time is that at?
Seven PM, normal council, normal council time.
One last thing I forgot to mention, today is December seventh, we all know, day that went down in infamy, and I saw in the paper today that they had a few survivors left from Pearl Harbor, that they were having a little, little get-together out there, and my heart goes out to all the survivors that are left from that mess.
Mr. Carlson, any comments tonight?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
I just want to thank everyone who helped with the parade on Friday and with Santa coming in the City Hall. It's always, always well-attended, and it's fun to see the kids, you know, excited they are. We had great weather, so that was, that was really helpful, so my appreciation goes out to all those who helped with that.
If there's no further comments, we can have a motion to adjourn?
You got citizen, citizen comments, don't you? Did you ask for citizen comments?
Yeah, I asked for citizen comments.
I'll make a motion, we adj, oh, you're right.
I just had a quick question, Marcia Goldslaw, when you talk about our budget or what we're
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Marcia Goldslaw, what is my address? Two Ninth Road Street, Norway, yeah, you slipped me wood, my thunder. Anyway, the question I had was, when I was at the audit, when I listened to Mr. Kennedy talk, he had said that, other than the nine million dollars were in the hole because of the pension, we were not much, but we were in the black, so I'm wondering, you, Mr. Babalani, come up with twenty-four million in the hole?
Well, I guess I'll refer that to Mary, Mary?
That would be, we have outstanding bond issues in electric, water, City Hall, Fire Hall, thirteen point three million, I want to say is the total of all that, I have a list of them if you want to see them, but it's, it's various different, I mean, that includes a DDA issue, you know, it's just a bunch of different bond issues in different departments.
Okay.
But I can provide your list.
There's a plan in place to pay all that off, just like your house mortgage.
Right, right, I, I was just, there was such a discrepancy between the twenty-four million and what I heard Mr. Kennedy say, you know, that I was actually a little confused because twenty-four million, nine million, that's a, that's a big jump, so I just wanted to see where the numbers were coming from, because he hadn't said, he hadn't quoted those, that number, you know, he said otherwise, we're in the black, so it wasn't by much, but we were still in the black, so I just wanted to see.
Yeah, like we talked about last meeting, on a scale from one to ten, when Lee asked him, he said, I, correct me, Lee, four and a half?
Four.
With ten being the best, so, that's where we're at.
Slowly but sure.
We're losing, we're losing ground on the MERS.
Well.
That's the big one.
I don't know if we're working our way out.
Everybody who has their money into any pension fund or whatever right now is struggling.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if we're really working our way out.
Dealing with MERS is a very difficult thing because they make the investments, they make their money, the people who run the place make their money, whether they make good investments or not, and, and then we're basically told we, what to do by them, so. Well.
Okay.
We have to, like I mentioned, I think we have to renegotiate this with the past and present employees because to me that, it's just going to drive us deeper in the hole.
It's just going to keep going in the hole, I mean, the only way you're going to get in is if the market really turns.
Well, then they say, the market's growing faster than, than the MERS pension because they're making conservative investments now because they lost so much money back in the first ten years of the.
Oh, wait.
And we need to get a good handle on what we're spending.
Okay, thank you.
Now I'd like to have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Support.
Roll call.
Mr. Babalani?
Yes.
Dr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Meneghini?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yep.
Mrs. Brew?
Yes.
Thank you and good night. That's a good one, Doc.